Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for September 22, 2025. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, 1-408-650-3123, and access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is anyone else recording the meeting? All right, so please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so looking at our agenda tonight, we have public comments. Is anyone signed up? No, always. We don't have anyone signed up. Community organizations, we don't have any items, presentations, and public hearings. We're supposed to have a department snapshot with the planning.
May I just ask, I know one resident who did want to do public comment just walked in the room and didn't have a chance to sign up. Can we recognize him?
Sure. Who just came in and wants to make a public comment?
Hello, Jess.
Okay, come on up. Are you?
Hello. It's going to be a...
You can just go right to the podium.
I don't know if it's going to be an open meeting, but I'm sure there's going to be things I'd like to comment at approach. So I don't really have anything to say at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so you'd rather wait till the end?
Yes, if that's okay.
Okay, so write your name on the... That one should be the comments for the end of the meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
So Dr. McNair is going to give us a snapshot of the planning department. Unfortunately, he is at another meeting, so he's not available right now. So moving down in the agenda, we're going to have a public hearing, auto repair license for M&amp;T Auto Body Repair, 848 South Bush Street, Auburn. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I see a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so our public hearing is open. Is Mr. Blaze here? Michael Blaze, why don't you come on right up and have a seat up right here? Thank you. Can you tell us what you want to do?
Yep, so I have an auto body shop on Route 29, Auburn. I've been there. I have an occupancy permit and have a license now, but it was just a name change. So that's basically... In compliance, I have an occupancy permit, everything else. It's just a name change on the license.
Name change only?
Yep.
Okay.
So I have a license, have occupancy permit, have all the licensing, and just name change, that's why I'm there.
What was the previous name?
T&amp;M Auto Body.
T&amp;M?
Mm-hmm.
And now it's M&amp;T?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions? Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the auto repair license for M&amp;T Auto Body and Repair at 848 Salford Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're all set, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have departmental items, and the DPW has two items. Why don't you come on up, Joanna Packman. First, we're looking at the informational communication about the 2025 roadway reconstruction and improvements. And we do have some, a document from you with that information.
So I just wanted to start off with saying that the 2025 calendar year project is substantially complete. That involved our Ridgewood Drive, Saratoga, Washburn, Arrowhead, Main Street, and Old Common Road. And we are looking ahead at the next round of streets. And we are going to be preparing the documents to go up for bid this fall. And that's going to include South Street from Central to Route 20, and then South Street and other section further on the other side of Route 20, from 137 South to the railroad crossing. Then there's a small section right at Barnes Street, from the intersection of Barnes Street to 354 South Street. Then Church Street from Central Street to Route 12, Lancaster Street, Church Street to Garden Street, Auburn Street from 123 Auburn Street to Oxford Street North, and then Old Millbury Road. It's a small section right near the Oxford Town Line. In addition to that, we have awarded a drainage project that should be done by the end of the construction season. I believe they're expected to be done by the end of October. And that includes replacement of pipe along Woodland Park, replacement of metal pipe again, Meadowbrook Road, and that's within the roadway, as well as some cross-country drainage and easement behind houses, between the houses and the golf course, replacement of pipe along Prospect Street, and some additional drainage on Chestnut Ave.
So the streets on the top, that's going to be going out to bid, you said, right? And for work to start when?
It would be in the spring.
In the spring. Any questions?
Go ahead.
I just have a couple. So thank you for the early look at the FY '26 streets. I greatly appreciate it. Glad to see South Street and Church Street on there. I know a lot of the residents will be happy. I just, I had asked for this to be put on the agenda because back in the spring, we got an unofficial list of 23 streets that I was hoping to get an update on the status that, of those streets, and where they stood in reconstruction. And I know you said that the streets done for 2025 are substantially complete. However, I don't think we've done all 23. So I was hoping to get, and I know that, you know, I consulted with this list, and I said, yes, these are the streets I was asking about. Specifically, my biggest concern was Otis Street. So anyone who's driven down Otis Street knows that it is literally one of the worst streets in the town. In your own ratings that was given to us in 2025, it was rated as a 2. Only three streets ahead of it were 1. And I just drove by it, down it, two days ago, and it hasn't been touched yet. So is there a plan to do the other streets that were on this list, specifically Otis Street and some of the others that are ranked pretty high, in your condition of 1 to 5, this year or next year?
So we would be looking again at the next round of streets after this, the streets that I listed just now, were in a little bit of a different situation just because the state funding, although approved at the end of July, it's still not available. So it kind of cuts into our construction season. As far as Otis Street, we need to reevaluate what we can do about the drainage. And I'm not looking more fully at the underlying soils because that street was done in, I want to say, 2012. And for a reconstruction, that's just not acceptable. So there's something going on with that street. So we're gonna, it's gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do some research, some exploratory borings, just to see what's going on. In addition to that, I would want to, I usually want to group streets together just so that we have more competitive pricing. Whenever we do a contract, we try to group them together so that mobilization is minimized, the cost of mobilization has been minimized. So I would want to group that. I think, I was looking at, I think Buttonwood. I'm just looking, trying to picture the map in my head right now. But that is one of the streets that I have, you know, that I want to prioritize. I just want to make sure that when we do it again this time, because it has, there's been streets that haven't been touched, you know, for much longer than Otis Street that have been waiting on the list. I want to make sure that we do that and do it right so that we don't go back, you know, 50 years later.
What, in terms of the scoring of your 1 to 5 for South Street, Church Street, Lancaster, Auburn, Old Millbury, how do they compare to the list of the 23 streets that you had given us, which were 1s and 2s, nothing reached a 3? But none of these streets on here are on this list.
So these were, I want to also balance, you know, neighborhood streets as well as, you know, main streets where we have the most amount of traffic. So I was more focused on the main streets for this round. And we typically alternate, try to have, you know, at least a little bit of a mixture. I know that Auburn Street is not, wasn't rated as high, but we're going to be milling it. So we're going to be milling and then sealing the cracks just to extend the life of that street. It's not in as bad of a condition as some of the other streets, but just to keep it from getting any worse.
So I guess, I don't want to make you come back, but I guess, can I ask through the town manager that we get at least a report or an email on the streets that are on this list, when they're going to be done, and what their current status is? I'm sure that, I know some of them are on here that you mentioned that are substantially complete, but it's not the majority of them. It's not even, you know, it's not even probably a third of them. So I just want to know, because I mean, this list was given to the Select Board, was put on the agenda, became a public document, we had residents come here, ask about the streets. I know I fielded questions from residents on these streets saying, hey, I thought my street was getting done. Where is it on the list? Why isn't it not done yet? So I just want to, you know, be fully transparent with the residents and say, yes, it was on the list, not done this year, won't be for two years now, won't be for three years now. And to know that if we're, I understand the balancing of the, you know, the main roads versus the neighborhood streets, but if we're not going by the condition index, I think we also want to explain that as well.
I think I had originally sent over a preliminary list of streets, and I think that that might be the, you know, a little bit of the confusion. So I'll make sure that, you know, any, anything that I send, you know, that kind of looks like that, that's the finalized list for the year. We start out with the preliminary list of streets and then kind of work our way on, you know, down the line to see, you know, first of all, what we can, what's within the budget, and also the other circumstances that might, you know, that might not make that street the, you know, a good candidate for that year.
I guess my other question is, how many total miles of streets did we get done this year?
This year?
Those ones that you said were substantially complete.
That was only the 1.2 that was presented in the spring. And then there's an additional 2.9 miles that we're going to be going up to bid for.
So this construction season, we've only done 1.2 miles?
Yes.
How does that compare to other construction years? Seems like it's getting smaller and smaller.
It has been.
I just want to understand.
Yeah, the prices are definitely going up. The additional money that we get from Chapter 90 is going to help, but at the same time, we're also trying to address the drainage concerns.
I think Main Street had a lot of drainage concerns, right, for this past year that were addressed, or no?
So Main Street did have some drainage concerns, but we also did, I want to say, let me just refer to my, we had some, I believe, Ridgewood Drive, that neighborhood, there was drainage associated with that as well.
I do recall that being discussed with, with one of the reasons. Well, not necessarily part of this, it is with roads. So I mean, we're going to come into the winter season. What's being done for preservation, patching, repairs before we get into the snowplow season? So we at least maintain the roads that we can, especially if we're going, you know, to 1 to 3 miles of repair a year. What does that look like as far as work? Where does that stand?
So we're going, getting back on the roads right now. Some of our staff was, we were stretched a little thin with some other projects, some drainage projects, as well as our, the Goddard Park and Gleason Park projects. But as of today, they're going back out there to do some, you know, some more, you know, not just throwing mix in the hole, but actual, you know, more substantial patching.
And is there a way for residents, if they have an area that they know about, to notify? So someone can at least come and assess that before the winter comes, or?
Absolutely. So on the town website, there is a report a pothole section that you can click and just put the information in, and then we'll get that. And our highway superintendent will deploy a crew out.
And if I may, through the town manager, I know that they're doing a lot of work, and I know I complain about not seeing enough, but maybe, again, if there's a report a pothole or some sort of scope of work that we can see, all the work that is being done, to try to maintain that, because I do feel my share of concerns for the road, and the residents certainly letting us know. But it always helps to say, this is what we're doing, even though we didn't get to it. I like to have that data and say, hey, we filled 850 holes, or whatever the metric ends up being, so we can at least get that preservation together. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a couple more, I'm sorry. So in terms of the drainage work, thank you for this list. I know that I've been talking to residents on Chestnut Avenue, and they're going to greatly appreciate this work getting done. And I just want to say that, you know, Ken Fairbanks and his crew are great in responding to concerns about spot locations, sinking manhole covers, that kind of stuff. Is there a way that we can get, I know there are, you know, that I brought up, concerns of other sort of sinking manholes, or sinking catch basins on Bryn Mawr and other locations. Is there a reporting mechanism as well for that, that is a way for residents to report that, and then sort of see a progress as, you know, when's it scheduled, when's it going to be done, and have a follow-up, either through you or to the town manager?
So that's sort of, I have a twofold answer for that. So I, we have, we get messages, we get phone calls all the time, and our, you know, our office staff takes those messages in and reports them to Ken Fairbanks. In addition to that, in the coming months, we're looking to roll out an adopt a drain program where some residents can adopt a catch basin, and they can report, and they have sort of ownership of that catch basin. So if there's an issue with it, if they see that there's, you know, it's not taking in water, or if there's something that needs to be addressed, they can, you know, they have that direct connection with the DPW. So we're looking at rolling that out in the coming months, and that's part of the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition that's going to be funded.
I guess where I'd like to see sort of, that's a great start, where I'd, so I'd like to see something where a resident reports it, and then they can see it, that yes, it's been acknowledged, it's been reported, and it's scheduled for work here, or it's, or some kind of feedback system that's back and forth, because, you know, I'm often getting phone calls and reporting it, and I feel like I'm kind of nagging you guys, and I don't want to be nagging you guys, and saying, you know, we're getting this request at 10 Bryn Mawr. When is 10 Bryn Mawr going to get done? You know, those types of things. So I mean, if there was a list online that I could refer the resident to and say, hey, they're scheduling it for these three weeks, I don't have to call you, you know, Kenny, call the town manager and say, when is this going to happen? It'd just be, it adds a layer of transparency, so the resident themselves can see, I've reported it, somebody has seen it, someone's going to do the work, and we don't have to keep nagging the staff.
And through the chair, on that note, we're also looking at a work order system internally for the DPW that would allow us to track these things so that we can have those answers ready or available for residents as well.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be very helpful. Just one last question. I know it's street-related, but not streets, sidewalks. Two specific sidewalks, just to check on their status, I'm sorry. Bryn Mawr sidewalk, last update was, that we got was that official update, RFQ was ready, 3.5, that you had put out to bid for design, I believe. And then Walsh, on 3.5, you were waiting for a survey to start. So can we just get an update on those, status of those two sidewalks?
Sure. So Bryn Mawr is under design. I believe that, I'd have to, I don't want to speak for the consultant, but I believe that the wetland delineation and the survey is done. The anticipated date for the contract documents to be out was going to be late fall. I don't have the information in front of me, but that was, that was part of the agreement. So we were anticipating going out to bid over the winter with the start of construction in the spring. And same with Walsh Ave, that's being designed in-house, but with construction going on, our, my engineers have been out on site visits and occupied elsewhere. So over the winter, again, we have the survey and the wetland delineation, so they have the information that they need to finalize the design. That one would probably be, I would like to bid it out in the spring, but I just want to make sure that I bid the Bryn Mawr sidewalk first, and make sure that I have funds available for Walsh Ave.
Okay, so we can expect Bryn Mawr sidewalk to be constructed in spring, early summer of 2026?
Next construction season.
Thank you.
Through the chair, how many engineers are employed by the town?
So I'm a licensed engineer, and there's two other ones. The, one is more focused on construction, and the other is more stormwater and regulatory. So they both have their strengths, but I believe our presentation is going to be in November, so you'll get a chance to meet them.
Thank you.
I just have a question. How many miles of roads are in the town?
So based on the Mass DOT records, it's 97 miles.
97? Okay.
That would be the publicly accepted.
97 miles. Do you find that your department plows more than that? Okay. Well, let's just finish up here on deep, you have some informational communication regarding the Water Street closure for us, right?
Yes. So we were contacted by Mass DOT last fall regarding the culverts on Water Street. They noted some deficiencies. They said that there wasn't really anything critical that they saw, but there was going to be a report coming out shortly that might give us the ability to apply for some funding for a redesign, and that's sort of where we were heading. In January, we received the inspection from Mass DOT, and we applied for a couple, two of the grants that would actually fit that need. We applied for the municipal smart bridge program and the DER's Culvert Replacement Municipal Assistance Grant Program. Unfortunately, we were not awarded either one of them. At the same time, during my conversation with Mass DOT at the initial, when we had the initial conversation, they did say that because there were some deficiencies, they were going to amp up their inspections to be more often every three months, just so that they're, you know, they're aware of the condition of the culverts. So we were, we were notified by Mass DOT recently that they recommend that we close one lane of Water Street due to the deficient pipes. So at this point, we're going to be going before town meeting for the design of the replacement of those culverts. There are two 4-foot diameter corrugated metal pipe culverts.
Say that again, please.
There are two 4-foot diameter corrugated metal pipe culverts, and I would imagine that we would probably be going with an open-channel concrete precast structure that will allow for stream crossing standards, something a little bit, something that has more capacity, but also more environmentally friendly. So once we heard, when we, when we got word that we needed to get, we needed to close Water Street, obviously we worked on trying to get the, getting all the necessary components to facilitate that, but at the same time, we looked at other options like slip lining, replacing in kind, but it came to the realization that the replacement would be the best for the town. So at this point, Water Street is closed right past the bank, so you can, traffic is allowed from Central Street to Route 12, but not the other way. And it is being detoured along Meadow Sharon and Route 12.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, so once the deficiency was known, grants were applied for and weren't received, but it seems like the condition's a lot worse. Does that help prioritize the town for grants to get this resolved? Obviously, we've shut down a lane for concern. Does that move us up in the ability to apply for and get grants?
So I anticipate applying for grants to, you know, in the meantime, I, I want to get the design going as soon as possible, so that we're ready for when, you know, whenever we can, for construction. But in the meantime, while the design is, once the engineers are designing this, I would foresee any grants that are available, we would, we would apply for. It was my understanding that the reason, part of the reason why we didn't get the grant was because the detour was relatively easy. But knowing that the, knowing that we have to close down that one lane, I'm hoping that it would be, you know, looked at a little bit more critically, and we might be, you know, we might have a better chance of getting that, those grants.
Were there other deficiencies in the DOT report that we... Were there other deficiencies in the DOT report that we have to be concerned about? Or do they just look at this one street and how often are they coming out and inspecting the other areas?
So this is, I believe this is a relatively newer program within the last few years that they're, they're inspecting culverts and not just bridges. But this is the only one that we, you know, we received a phone call like that, that it's, you know, it's deficient and deficient and we might need to close down a lane. But as far as the, this culvert, Mass DOT is going to keep coming back every three months to make sure that, you know, further lane closures aren't necessary.
Can I ask, is this something that can be done, the design done in-house by our engineers? Or is it something that we have to go out for?
This is something that we would have to go out for.
So I just have a couple of questions. Did the state give any indication how we went from FYI, there's some deficiencies in January 2025, you might want to start looking for it, to there's a failure, you need to shut down a travel lane nine months later?
I did get a little bit of an indication that they, the, um, their, what their priorities are and what their, their work, the, I'm trying to, my words are escaping me. But, um, so their directive has changed and so they were told that they need to be more critical of these bridges and they have to, so they're more likely to close these bridges or these culverts down. So it sounds like there's other communities that might be in the same boat, just because there might be, you know, culverts that were acceptable in the past will not be looked at that at this point.
Are we being more proactive now, given this situation and going out either with internal staff, if we have that technical expertise or with a consultant to go out and look at all of our other culverts and all of our other dams to make sure that, what condition they're in and be a little more proactive in terms of creating some CIP projects in advance of getting to the point where we're shutting down a street?
Absolutely. We, um, so we do have, we do have our engineers going out there on a regular basis and doing these inspections as part of our stormwater program. In addition to that, we just hired a new highway employee that is being funded through stormwater. So we're using the staff turnover to kind of have him start on a different program. He'll be going out, when he's cleaning catch basins, he's going to be going out with a tablet to, to note the condition of not only the catch basin, but also the pipe and noting the condition, the material and what we're looking at so that we have a little bit of a, you know, we have a better idea of the infrastructure that we might need to be replacing.
But specifically the dams and culverts, we're stepping up our inspections and we have the technical expertise in-house to know what?
That would be, yeah, that would be the two engineers, yes.
Sorry. Do those two engineers have the time? Because they're doing sidewalks, they're doing designs, they're doing stormwater, they're also going to, I just don't want to get to the point where we are faced with another critical shutdown of something that we thought was just minor deficiencies that no, it's a lot more serious and we're now shutting down a road because of it long-term.
So, yes. So the, we, historically, we've had a town engineer and then an assistant town engineer. I want to say maybe four years ago, we took on another staff engineer. So that's why I have two engineers currently because of the regulations, the MS4 regulations for stormwater. And that is one of those things that, you know, wasn't really looked at in years past. And it's also, it is now part of our permit to be looking at that infrastructure. So that person was, was hired.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say as much as I can.
What, I have a question. What timeframe are we talking about? How long will the road be closed?
So, um, one of the proposals that I received was them going through the, the design process from the winter all the way to the fall of next year. I'm not sure if that is typical because I haven't seen any of the other proposals, but, um, this, this is going to be a longer process. I'm just looking at, you know, if the, um, if the, if the contract documents are not ready until the fall or even, you know, late fall, then we might be missing that construction season.
So it wouldn't even go out to bid until a year from now? Possibly.
Possibly. I'm just basing this on one, um, one proposal that I just received a couple of days ago. I'm not sure what, you know, what the availability of other engineering companies are that we had reached out.
Thank you.
I just got a follow-up to that. Realizing that we're talking about a year design before it even goes out to bid and possibly not reconstructing until 2027 and facing a deteriorating situation where one lane is already closed after nine months of getting a FYI. Can we take a second look at slip lining based on the fact that slip lining can be done a lot faster, generally a lot cheaper? Depending on the method, it can last up to 75 years. And it probably can be done next spring at the latest. Because I don't see how it's realistic to shut down a public street halfway now going into the winter and keeping it shut down potentially, if it fails even more between now and you're talking about bidding next winter, that we're shutting down the street and dead ending it completely on either side of that culvert and waiting that long when there might be a potential, it might not be the perfect solution, but it's not a bad solution. And I think it's, it's probably more realistic that I would just ask for you to reconsider and take another look at slip lining, whether you bring a consultant on and ask that question to them first before they go down this long endeavor of designing something for a year.
We can, we can certainly revisit that. We looked at slip lining. We had a conversation with an engineering firm. I think the day that we got the email from Mass DOT, the concern is that the soil is getting eroded in between the two culverts. So it might be a little bit more complicated than just, you know, those two, those two pipes. But I'm certainly, you know, happy to have that conversation with another engineering firm just to make sure that we're looking at all options.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to move, so we're all set. Thank you very much, Joanna. So do I hear a motion to move item 9A up?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So Chief Coleman and Chief Mills, if you'll come up, we're going to have a discussion and possible board vote to regionalize the Town of Auburn dispatch operation.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chief Mills and I have prepared a joint statement that we would like to read into the record for the board. And I'll be handing a copy of that statement to Danielle for the record as well. So again, good evening. Chief Mills and I are here this evening asking the board to vote on joining the Central Mass Regional Emergency Communications Center, also known as SEMREC. First, we want to make it very clear that a vote to move towards a regional dispatch center is not a reflection on the work of our professional dispatch staff and the work that they do on a daily basis. In fact, it is with them in mind that we make this recommendation because they deserve better opportunities and resources than they currently are working with. Second, we want to ensure the board that neither of us would be here tonight making this recommendation if we thought for one second that this was a step backwards for public safety in our community or the region. We believe this is a step forward by streamlining the communications process to ensure our dispatchers have adequate resources and create efficiencies when requesting our mutual aid partners like we do on almost a daily basis. The reality is, is that no individual community is able to provide the resources necessary on its own to appropriately staff a communications center, keep up with the advances in technology, provide up-to-date facilities and maintain other staff positions needed to properly support their mission. The turnover rate of dispatch employees alone is crippling to most communications centers because they are not able to stay competitive in today's market. Auburn has turned over 11 full-time and four part-time employees in the last five years. That's every employee in our center with the exception of one. We have been funded for 11 full-time dispatchers for two and a half years and have not been able to achieve that level of staffing due to constant turnover. The dispatcher communications position is a high-pressure, demanding position that deserves more resources than we are able to provide its operation. For the past 12 months, the chief and I, our communications director, Mary Ann O'Connor, and the town manager have been exploring the possibility of either creating our own regional communications center from the ground up, along with the towns of Charlton, Spencer, Southbridge and Stirbridge as part of a study that was conducted by a professional emergency communications consultant. While that study was being conducted, our group was contacted by SEMREC, the regional communications entity that currently serves the towns of Barry, Hubbardston, Okham, Rutland and Warren, and asked if we would be interested in joining their existing center in lieu of starting our own. Here with us tonight is the executive director of SEMREC, Mike Moriarty, as well as the director of special projects for State 911, Peter Kinnis, who are both seated in the back of the room to your right. They will be able to answer any questions the board may have regarding the proposal and the State 911 incentive grant. The proposed move to a regional dispatch center will allow our dispatchers to move from our current work model of two to three dispatchers per shift, where they are the call takers for both the business line as well as 911, performing emergency medical dispatch instructions over the phone and dispatching police, fire and EMS. Additionally, they are the forward-facing first point of public contact at the lobby window, performing various administrative duties for the police department and conducting cell checks when there are individuals held in custody. A practice that Chief Mills will tell you is not the best practice in 2025 and brings needless liability. Being responsible for all these tasks over a 12-hour shift is mentally draining and with only two dispatchers in the room, it leaves little to no time for breaks or the ability to step away after a difficult 911 call. When built out, the SEMREC plans and proposes 10 dispatchers per shift. This number of a dedicated personnel will allow for a more sensible division of labor. Dispatcher assignments will be broken up by function with four call takers whose only responsibility it is to answer 911 calls and then assign those calls to either three dedicated police dispatchers or three dedicated fire EMS dispatchers. In addition to the dispatch staff, the center employs a director, deputy director, and will expand to other staff and management level positions, including an operations director, training coordinator, quality assurance and improvement, dedicated IT and radio technicians, as well as a supervisor in the community, in the communications center 24/7. As mentioned, no individual community would be able to put this number of staff towards a communications center to ensure its success. Currently, the town expends $1.2 million annually for the communications center, including salaries, benefits and other contractual obligations. Our estimated assessment to join SEMREC would be $368,509. This does not take into consideration the towns of Sutton and Oxford, who are both exploring the possibility of joining SEMREC. The inclusion of these two towns in the future would further reduce our annual assessment. The State 911 Department, through its grant programs, is incentivizing communities towards regional dispatch as there are currently 32 regional centers operating in the state, with more to come online in the next several years. The State 911 Grant will fund our assessment 100% for the first three years of operation, 50% in year four and 25% in year five. This is a savings of $4.6 million over a five-year period that can be reinvested in many needed areas of the community, and this does not include capital expenditures. And although paying less for something is nice, it should not be the driving factor of this decision. The driving factors should be the increase in service delivery and giving our dispatchers the needed staff, technology and career ladder within a modern-day 911 communications center. Again, something we will never be able to give them on our own. SEMREC has a signed letter of intent and is currently in negotiations to purchase the building at 16 Albert Street in Auburn as their new communications center. Although it would be great to have SEMREC located here in Auburn, as we feel we can offer them outstanding municipal services like we do our residents and business community, it is important to understand that the physical location of the communications center is not important. Today's technologies such as fiber networks, microwave communications and simulcast radio sites would allow us to join a regional center hundreds of miles away. It may seem like an odd pairing to some that a communications center supporting the towns of Barry, Hubbardston, Okham, Rutland and Warren, who don't seem to have anything in common with the Town of Auburn, would be served by the same dispatchers. But the radio network, which is broken up into several groups, geographically pairs towns in the same response district and mutual aid agreements for response efficiencies. Today's technology has changed the landscape for communications professionals and the way they did things 30, 20 or even 10 years ago is not the same and it has advanced beyond our imagination. There are regional centers across the country that cover dozens of departments with hundreds of response units covering thousands of square miles. The towns of Charlton, Spencer and Stirbridge have already voted to join SEMREC with Southbridge and Sutton taking their votes in the coming weeks. Thank you for your consideration of this proposal. Chief Mills and I, as well as Director O'Connor, SEMREC Director Moriarty and Mr. Kinnis from State 911 are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Questions?
I don't know if we want to open it up to the audience or whatever. I know some people had concerns about it. I think the statement that you just read encompasses a lot of things. The detail's not fully vetted everything, but it touches on the cost savings, the career growth, the opportunity for, for people to focus on their job, right? I think in the past, we've heard that dispatchers are pulled away or have to do checks, things like that. So I appreciate that this is an opportunity for us and I certainly would love to hear what other people are saying about it. And then as we move down, I did see the, the contract. I guess one concern would be just making sure that we know the full expenses going in. I know that there will be tangible expenses and costs that we don't fully know. I know there's some estimated ones, but just want to make sure when we're looking at that value that we get back, that it doesn't cost us more or that we fully know the savings. They're pretty significant, but there will be other additional costs to that, so.
Thank you for the in-depth report as well as your statement tonight. You know, financially, it does make sense. It's one of the things we have to factor, but it shouldn't be the only factor. As you said, on paper, it seems like it's As you said, on paper, it seems like it's better overall for our employees. Can you speak to the process that both of you have done to speak to our employees, our current employees, about this, you know, about the proposal, about the potential change, what it means, just so we have an idea of outreach that you've done?
Sure. So the dispatch staff was told at the beginning of the year that a study was being conducted as the board was advised as well. And it seemed like a long time went by before nothing was really done, because it took about five to six months for that study to occur. But again, what, as I mentioned in my statement, when we went into that study, SEMREC was not even on anybody's mind. That call kind of came in the midst of the study after SEMREC realized that those five municipalities were researching starting their own. And then, that the exploration of SEMREC sort of tacked some additional, you know, time onto that. After we kind of buttoned up everything with SEMREC as far as the district agreement, and Director Moriarty, he can speak to the timeline, but it feels in some respects that, you know, this was a lot of standing around and waiting, and then, in a short period of time, the information started coming and flowing. And again, it's an example of how all of these other municipalities, they're in the same boat. All of those other communities within the last, you know, three to four weeks have taken their votes. Some communities are taking their votes in the upcoming weeks. So all of this information, once we received this information, we did hold a dispatch meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we heard, you know, from our dispatchers with their concerns. And I'm not going to sit here tonight and tell you that there are not concerns by the dispatchers. And the reality is, is that Chief Mills and I, we, and I want to include the manager in that because she was in the meeting as well, their concerns are valid. The majority of their concerns revolve around their employment and what is going to happen with their employment. I think that, and, you know, the dispatch union president, Tony DeRay, is here this evening. He was in attendance at the meeting, and, you know, he made a comment that night and said, you know, "I think we all understand what the benefits are. You know, we want to talk about what are the negatives." And the negatives, as best as we could tell from that dispatch meeting, and Director Moriarty was at that meeting as well, there were, a lot of the questions were unknown because they are labor-related questions. They're not questions that we can necessarily answer. So the dispatch union today is represented by MassCop, and SEMREC is also represented by MassCop. So MassCop is well aware, as some of these other communities that have recently joined, are MassCop represented as well. So they are well aware that this is happening. They are representing unions across the Commonwealth who have recently regionalized, so this isn't new to them. But in our conversations, you know, with our counterparts, I haven't had a fire chief tell me yet that when they regionalized into their center, that their dispatch employees were making less money, or had less benefits, or weren't credited their years of longevity when they were negotiated into the new contract. I think the reality is, is that those are standard expectations. There are certainly standard expectations for Chief Mills and I, that if we were to do this and MassCop, you know, begins to represent these other municipalities, it's certainly something that Chief Mills and I would support. And one of the things that was not in my letter, but the governance of SEMREC is based, it's three different boards. There's an operations board that is the police and fire chiefs that deal with the operational issues. There's an administrative board that is made up of the towns' TAs and TMs. And then there's a separate finance committee that is made up of all of the CFOs or the accountants, whatever a certain municipality may have. And there are three distinct boards, but there's representation across the boards to make sure that everybody, you know, that there's good communication across the board. But I think, you know, we've, you know, and I'll say it tonight publicly, you know, we would certainly make it clear, you know, to SEMREC or to even MassCop negotiating on behalf of not only our dispatchers but other dispatchers, because they're all in the same boat. We would make our position known that things like recognizing longevity in the community that they come from and no loss of vacation time or benefits would be extremely important to us. And like I said, I have yet to find a fire chief to tell me that their dispatchers were making less money. So in all cases, and, you know, Director Moriarty has said this from the very beginning when he met with all of the communities. He said, "Our goal is to make SEMREC the premier regional dispatch in this area. I talked a little bit in my opening statement about turnover and the struggles, and we all seem to just be robbing from each other. If someone can make an extra dollar or two in this center, they're going to leave and they're going to go to that center." And it's, there's no, you know, there are new people, not a lot, but there are some new people coming in, but we see a lot of existing faces and voices that are just moving from center to center. And that's one of the advantages to this, is that we can sort of stop this hemorrhaging of dispatchers, and we can work with a center that is committed to becoming the premier regional. And I will just say this, and I've said this privately to Mr. Moriarty, and I'll say it tonight publicly, it's really hard to say and declare that you want to be the premier anything and then not offer better compensation than the dispatch centers, the standalone centers that are working now. So do I think that we're going to be in a situation where employees are making less money and less benefits? I don't think so, but that's just based on my conversations with chiefs. I won't be at the table. I'm not a MassCop, you know, union rep, but I would have to think that the MassCop representatives certainly have the best interest of these dispatchers in their hearts and minds when they go to the table, to make sure that these employees are not shorted in any way.
Yes, thank you for that. You kind of checked off all my other questions with respect to, you know, were the union representation, would that continue? They are still considered public employees?
Yes, so the closest correlation that we can draw this to is think of the Bay Path regional school system. So if we were to vote to join, we would pay an assessment, much like we pay Southern Wester County. They are the employer, so the town of Auburn would no longer employ these members. They would be represented by the union that currently represents SEMREC, and they would continue to pay into Wester County retirement, so they would be no, so their time from the town of Auburn would automatically transfer into their new employment with SEMREC through Wester County.
If I may, manager. I supervised the dispatchers directly for 10 years, when the police supervisors were in charge of supervising the dispatch center. What always frustrated me was not only the turnover, as we alluded to in the report, or in the statement, rather, but there was just no career development abilities or opportunities. You were, at that point, you were a dispatcher, and there were no other real opportunities. And then at some point, we created a lead dispatcher or a supervisor-type position. And, you know, Ms. Vecchio, as well as previous town managers, have done the best they can to bring the pay up to a, you know, a level that's competitive or better than competitive with the area. But everything that I've seen would indicate that the pay is better from all the centers that I'm familiar with. And secondly, there's an extreme, a definite higher amount of career opportunities, whether it's as a training supervisor or somebody that's, you know, going to work on the radios. There's all these other career opportunities available. And, you know, we, at the police department, we, not harp on, but we definitely emphasize career development, and I think it's only fair that dispatchers have that same, they're already professionals. They should be, there should be some professional development in there and the ability to accelerate their careers to whatever level they want to. If they want to remain dispatchers, that's totally fine. They should be compensated competitively. And then, if they do aspire to some sort of management position, then, you know, hopefully that opportunity is available to them as well. And when you incorporate, you know, 12, 10 to 12 communities, those opportunities obviously expand. So that was one of the things that initially piqued my interest. And I don't know if the question will be asked, but, you know, one of the concerns I had initially is, you know, the town manager, when she first became the town manager, emphasized, you know, community service and customer service. And, you know, as I always tell our people, it's, we work in a service profession, and, you know, delivery of service is what we do. People aren't always happy with some of the services. You know, some of our customers aren't looking to buy what we're selling necessarily, but generally, the people that we deal with, you know, they're looking for help and they're looking for a service. So my concern was, you know, if this is at all represents or potentially represents a backward step to service to the community, to our community, then I'm not in favor of it. And those concerns have been, you know, put to rest. There, you know, there is or there are a series of responsibilities that the dispatchers currently, you know, do for us at the police department. We would have to replace, you know, the ability to perform those functions, but I want to make sure, as the police chief, that we do not take a backward step in service. And after my conversations with both the fire chief and the manager, as well as Mr. Moriarty and others, but definitely I feel that the town is going to be well-represented and we're going to remain, or even possibly increase the level of service that we're offering.
So, last question. You kind of led into it, knowing that they provide those services right now to Auburn Police, what's the plan going forward for somebody to man the front desk, someone to check the cells when somebody's there, and sort of provide those functions? Is that just an administrative personnel that you would hire, or is that going to be a sworn officer that would have to do that work?
Currently, you know, this, obviously, we're not, there's no agreement in place or anything, but, you know, we know that we have to replace approximately 168 hours, you know, in the center, right? So it'd be a combination of sworn personnel and civilian personnel. Currently, we have three sectors. The town's broken into three sectors for call responsibility. What occurs now is that a person that comes into the lobby, in approximately 80% of the cases, they need, a police officer eventually comes into the lobby to speak with them. There's like 20% or less of the lobby interactions result in not, you know, no police officer coming back in. So it would create the station in the lobby area as its own sector. So we would have to man that sector, you know, with police officers as well as with civilian personnel, because during the days, during the week, we have a records person, and we would be able to augment that position as well as across the other two shifts. But more likely than not, we haven't exactly got into the specific deployment of when, you know, which shift will be staffed by which person, but the plan currently, right now, is to create a fourth sector and staff that appropriately.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, too. You, Chief Coleman, you alluded to looking at regionalization plans in the past. Can you talk about those and let us just provide us information on that?
Sure. So we have, we have been approached over the past decade, we have been approached with two other regional proposals that we explored but sort of quickly backed away from because they were not what we considered to be in the best interest of the community. There are two ways in which regional dispatch centers are organized in the Commonwealth. One is called a host model, which means if you are the host community, then you're in charge. You set the rules. The city of Worcester is an example of a regional center that's a host community. They have the town of Leicester, but Leicester does not have a seat at the table in terms of what goes on within the center. So we were contacted within the last 10 years by Worcester, asking if we would join, and we politely said we were all set. We were then approached by the Webster-Dudley Regional when that first was upstarting. And although that was a district model, which would have given us opportunities at the table much like SEMREC is presenting, the reason that more communities did not participate in the Webster-Dudley model was the center was going to be in the brand-new Webster Police Station. And many of the fire chiefs and police chiefs felt that, as we do, that communications is its own profession. And it was always sort of a branch within the police department because financially and just, you know, especially in the early days of 911, that's where it logically made sense to put it. But as the decades have gone on and technology has advanced and things like emergency medical dispatch and all of the whole other host of programs and services that they offer today, it's more of a profession today than it has ever been. And it deserves to be its own third-party independent service, not within the confines of a police station or a fire station, not under the direction of a police chief or a fire chief or their supervisors. They need their own professional hierarchy, and that's why, that's why many of those communities did not jump on with that Webster-Dudley model. This one, this proposal, and even when we were in the study phase, the five communities, including Auburn, we were all on the same page upfront. I felt very good about, like, specifically these five towns that we were working with in the early stages, because from the town administrators to the police chiefs and the fire chief, we were all in agreement on what model we wanted to see. District model, independent, outside building, you know, we were all sort of on the same page. And when we were approached by SEMREC, SEMREC used to be a host model. They are formerly known as Rutland Regional Dispatch. They had four other communities. Rutland was the fifth community, but Rutland was in charge. And Barry and Hubbardston and OCAM, those other communities didn't get a say at the table. But Rutland Regional knew that if they wanted to grow and they wanted to expand their services, that they were going to have to become a district model. So they, their board of directors, each individual town's board of selectmen in those five communities, voted to switch from a host to a district model, which, again, gives everybody a seat at the table, much like our regional school committee at Bay Path, where we have Auburn representatives there. So looking at this proposal sort of globally, this checked all the boxes in terms of what we were looking for. I don't think Auburn has ever been, I have never, I'll just speak for me, I have never personally been opposed to dispatch, regional dispatch. I have been opposed to the presentations or the models that we had been offered to join. That is why both the chief and I have a comfort level in this model, because this is what we have been looking for in terms of sort of the right people to be involved in.
Okay, thank you. I have another question, too. What is the exit strategy? What if, and God forbid, this doesn't, this dispatch center doesn't meet Auburn's needs? What would the exit strategy be?
So if the board would like to hear from Mr. Kinnis from State 911, I can certainly, actually, I'd like to invite Mr. Kinnis up to the podium.
Thank you, yep.
So before he talks about what the PSAP strategy is, within the district agreement, the district agreement says that if for some reason the community says, you know what, we don't want to be involved in SEMREC anymore, we can send the board of directors from SEMREC a letter, and we have to give them two years' notice in order to withdraw. It doesn't mean that it will take two years to leave. There is a provision within the bylaws that allows the board to let us out earlier if we choose, but we just need to make sure that all of our financial obligations are met. So if we chose to leave in a particular fiscal year, but we had not yet paid our assessment, we could not be released until our assessment was paid for that fiscal year, and then the board could vote either to release us early or, you know, two years at the most. I would like Mr. Kinnis to talk specifically about the PSAP and sort of how that works.
All right, thank you. Hi, sir.
Good evening. Can you hear me? So it's your question, ma'am. Again, it would go back to, as Chief Coleman indicated, to the district agreement on the withdrawal process for the district itself. On the State 911 side, again, because it's not mandated, it's highly incentivized for the PSAP to go back to an individual PSAP, so from Auburn, joining Central Mass. the PSAP to go back to an individual PSAP, so from Auburn, joining Central Mass, back to Auburn, that would not occur. In the history of the regionals across the Commonwealth, only one agency has looked to kind of go through that process and what ended up happening is they joined another existing regional in that area. So it's not saying that you can't, by all means, communication I think is key for, for any partnership. And I would highly suggest working through any miscommunication or unhappiness with Central Mass Rec. But as far as it going back to Auburn, unless there's a clear public safety risk that can be defined per the development grant, per the policies of State 911, it, it, it wouldn't occur. So we would encourage you to, again, work through the, the, any issues that you have with Central Mass, and then if not, then possibly join another existing regional in the area.
Thank you. Chief Coleman and Chief Mills, what timeframe are we talking about?
It's, at this point, the estimate would be approximately two to two and a half years from now. As of right now, the, where the Rutland Regional, or where the Rutland Center is housed, it can't accommodate, and we have currently 10 dispatchers, and, you know, if Southbridge votes to go, it, it just can't accommodate any, any other positions and other, any other works, work stations. So they need to be able to get into a new building to have more space to be able to take on these other towns. And just one thing that the chief spoke to, you know, as you're already all familiar, you know, we went ahead and created our, created a new org for the dispatch, for the communications. We created a, a separate org, so it's a standalone budget, as, as you're all aware already. So for years, as the chief said, it had been under the police budget, within the police budget, but we cut it out and made it its own standalone, and which seemed to make sense and, and does make sense to me.
Just one follow-up through the chair. So much like in my conversations with the chiefs on the compensation for dispatchers and asking how that transition went, and, you know, by all accounts, that transition was, was actually pretty smooth. I also asked the question of all of the chiefs, and I spoke with dozens, I, I also asked the questions, any regrets? If, if you had to do it over again, would you have not gone regional? And I did not have one fire chief that said to me that they regret making that move to regional. In fact, some of them, the chief from Foxborough, said it was probably one of the best decisions that they'd made as a community. It enhanced their dispatch operations tremendously. So I, I fully understand and appreciate the question, right? We shouldn't be entering into anything unless we know what our exit strategy is and what the ramifications of that exit strategy are. So I completely appreciate the question. I just wanted to share that in, in my conversations with my counterparts, no one regretted this decision.
Okay, thank you.
And from, just one last, and from the police side, the only regrets that I had heard were the stations that went dark. You know, the stations that had nobody in the lobby to, you know, address the public concerns. And those were the only negatives that, that I heard from the police side, was a dark station. And because it, as far as service delivery goes, it's just not acceptable to me.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. Any other questions right now? No?
Madam Chair, can I just ask that you consider allowing members of the public, other professionals that are here, the, you know, the union representative of our current dispatchers to, to speak as well? This is a, a big decision for the town. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of paper here that, you know, shows that it's a big decision and a lot of studies have been done. I just think, you know, that, that we're best served by hearing from everybody that wants to speak tonight.
Is there anyone else who, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come to the podium, ask a question or speak? Dan?
Evening, Madam Chair, chiefs, town manager.
Identify yourself.
Danny Largess, 39 Perry Place. We've touched on the savings, but I haven't heard the amount of the savings. And also, what is it going to cost the town to, to man the station once the dispatches go out? What, how many people is it going to take? Is it going to be an officer per shift? Because now we're talking more offices, offices coming off the road. And what is it going to cost the town to get in on this regional center? I, I'm hearing all the good things, but I'm not hearing any figures, no cost figures in, as a town meeting member to vote for something. I want figures.
I, okay. I, he did mention some figures, maybe you want to repeat?
Yeah, through the chair, if I could just read the part of the opening statement where I addressed the figures that may sum it up. So currently, the town expends 1.2 million annually for the communications center salaries, benefits, and other contractual obligation. Our estimated assessment to join SEMREC would be $368,509 annually. And again, that does not take into consideration the fact that if Sutton and Oxford joins, that $368,000 assessment would go down. So the State 911 incentive grant will fund our assessment 100% for the first three years, 50% in year four, 25% in year five, giving a total savings in that five-year period of $4.6 million. Now, as Chief Mills had indicated, the, the staffing plan in terms of creating the lobby as an additional sector and how that will be staffed is still up for discussion, but with 1.2 million in savings annually, a portion of that money can be reinvested into creating the staff that needs to be there. And then that will still leave a considerable balance in terms of what that savings would be annually. So those are certainly discussions that the board and the finance committee and the town meeting will have to have. But essentially, and that 1.2 million in savings, the other thing that you have to remember is, that's based on today's numbers, right? We have new collective bargaining agreements in place that have just been signed over the next three years. So there's going to be escalation in that, in that savings. So that 4.6, that's on today's dollars, not the compounding dollars over the next five years.
Thank you.
So would it be a civilian contractor in the station? Would it be an officer?
The, the exact number and deployment of which personnel will be, will, you know, how many of each, at, at this time preliminarily, I think probably four police officers to start. And then I haven't determined the exact number of civilian employees that'll be needed. But again, we have to account for essentially 168 hours in, in the center and we have to be able to address walk-in traffic, which I have general numbers for, and the business line calls that come into the station, and prisoner watches or prisoner checks, and then whatever other public assistance that needs to occur in the lobby. So there are some of those assignments that can be assigned to civilians as they are now. And then there are some that would require a police officer and would be best served by a police officer. Again, my main concern was not allowing the lobby to go dark. I don't want people to have to come to our station and, you know, be seen on a camera or ring a bell, you know, to, to have their, their issue addressed. I think, you know, in this town, you deserve, you know, for what you're paying taxes, you absolutely deserve to speak to a police officer if you want to speak to a police officer and get the proper service from him or her.
So we're looking at four more offices plus civilians to man it. Has anybody calculated the cost of, of this? I mean, I, I, I don't actually know what your, your base salary officer is making these days, but I'm sure there's overtime when somebody's going to be out sick. And I know there's been offices dispatching because dispatches have been out sick or things like that. I mean, we're talking a lot of money that's starting to add up real quick, that the dispatches right now are currently doing. I mean, I know it's not in their job description and I, I've listened to the radio 100 times and I'll tell you what, there's one job I would not want to do because when it hits the fan, and I don't know how they even keep track of what's going on. But that's my concern. I mean, we're going to be hiring all these people and alls we're going to be doing is moving the dispatches someplace else, but now we got to hire all these people to take care of what the dispatches are doing. That's, that's going to be a chunk of change when it adds up.
Chief Coleman?
So, thank you. So to Mr. Largess's point, it's not a job I would want either. And I think in order to keep it in context, right, we have to remember that, as Mr. Largess just said, it, it's not that we're moving the dispatchers from the police station to another building and eliminating the jobs that they're doing. We have to keep in mind that many of those jobs that are forward-facing to the lobby are not the job of a dispatcher, right? And the reason, right, it, so in my mind, that's not a reason not to do this in order to still work with what we perceive to be an antiquated model to allow them to continue to do things that are outside of their job function. That fundamentally makes no sense, okay? To Mr. Largess's question, we have calculated the numbers. So again, in today's dollars, if you were to look at the 1.2 million dollars in savings, if you were to hire four additional police officers and two principal clerks to subsidize the principal clerk that is already employed by the police department, it's $483,000 a year. So again, much like I said in my statement, although saving money is nice, I think the board should be looking at this as reinvestment opportunities versus, versus savings. At the end of the day, will, will there be savings that the board could try to identify as true savings if, if you could? There are. But we all know that there are other needs, unmet needs in the community, so this is an opportunity to sort of reinvest those funds. But it would cost an additional, with, with the 1.2 million in savings, you'd be reinvesting $483,000, which would still, still leave you a balance of roughly over $700,000 available. But you're, you're fixing a problem within the lobby that it, that doesn't involve the current dispatch staff.
Thank you.
No, but they are doing it. And they do it with a smile. I, I mean, every time I've walked in there or had to call, and then my next question is, is we're going to be losing tax revenue on that building, are we not? Because it'll be on the dispatch center?
I, it's a question that I have, I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Moriarty. Do you know if the district purchases the building? Are you, are you tax exempt or would you be paying taxes on the building? Yeah. I, it's certainly, it's certainly, it's certainly a question we could ask, but I chalk this up into the, the category of, you know, you can't have it both ways. And like I said in the, in my opening statement, the geography of the building is not important. We would love to host them just as a community partner, but we don't have the ability to decide who makes offers on buildings and, and what that does. But there's also a certain population that feels that, and again, is some of it is not rooted in any fact, it's more feel-good type stuff, but there's a group of people that say, well, we want it here in Auburn, right? But they've, they've put an offer in on a building.
I, I would just like to add on to that. So it sounds like whether we're voting on this or not, they've already put an offer in on that building, whether Auburn's part of it or not, because that building meets their needs, has nothing to do whether Auburn joins or not. Additionally, we do get meals tax and service tax. And having those employees in our community shopping at our stores, going to our restaurants will also bring in other taxes. I'm not saying it's going to make up the difference, but I'm saying it's another source of revenue. And it sounds like the building works for them regardless of whether Auburn joins or not, so that really can't factor into our decision.
That's correct. They, that's a good point, Ms. Crane. They've all, they're in negotiation, so whether Auburn joins this or not, we could have SEMREC residing in this community whether we're a partner with them or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My question has been answered.
I was just going to address one part of Mr. Largess's question.
Yes, chief.
As, as I said, approximately 80% of the people of the lobby walk-in traffic results in a police officer being called into the station anyways. And you're right, they, the dispatchers currently screen those interactions and those calls with a smile on their face and they do an excellent job of it. No one's debating that. But ultimately, in, with this model, potentially, you're actually eliminating a delay in service delivery because now you have a police officer at the window who's able to address the person's question right then, rather than getting information, you know, having a dispatcher take the information, contacting the officer on the road, having the officer come back in, explaining the call or the situation to that officer, now having the officer go out. You know, I don't think we're in any trouble as far as response times or anything like that to the lobby calls, but nonetheless, I think it expedites some of the service delivery. Again, I'm in favor of that.
Thank you, Chief Mills. Okay, so I'll say, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself when you come up.
My name is Anthony DeRay. I am the union president for our local dispatchers. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak. Obviously, Chief Coleman mentioned earlier that, I made a comment at that meeting that we had about having a lot of, of all the negatives that we were asking were the unknowns. We know the positives. We know, we know the contract in general. I'm familiar with regional contracts. We know they're usually better than individual towns. We know the, the ladder that it creates. The one concern, really the main concern we had coming out of this meeting was, outside of really one or two questions, most of what we got was, I don't know. And that was truthful. I'm not saying that's dishonest, that was truthful. But there's a lot of concerns. One of the main things that I don't think has been mentioned here tonight is, we found in that meeting that every one of our employees will need to reapply for this district. Nobody, they're not just transferring. So everyone will have to reapply, interview, background, and if there's somebody they don't like that Auburn found suited for them, they will be out. And nobody will know when, nobody knows when those are, when those will be. So at the moment, we're not necessarily against regionalization, but at the same time, we do feel that it's kind of been rushed. It was brought up a, a year ago in a very different capacity where everyone would be going in fresh. Now we have a situation where people going in and there's an existing union, so they already have existing seniority, existing union leadership. We may be offered a seat at the table, but not really a voice at the table. So our main concern is how quickly this is coming together, how quickly this is possibly being decided. So at this point, and obviously this is something that needs to be asked and seconded with the selectmen, but what we would like to see, or what we would not like to see is a decision tonight. In that meeting, there was a lot of significant concerns about operations and the, how much actual savings there was to the, to the town. But we just feel like at this point, it's being rushed. And one thing I didn't know that I learned at this meeting from the representative from the state, there is no exit strategy. As soon as you agree and as soon as you're in, you're in. There was no getting out. You may go to another regional, but there's not that many choices and one's probably the same as the other. So again, we are not dead-set against this. We're certainly not dead-set for it. There's a lot of concerns, especially when it comes to employment, where we will sit, where we will fit within the other towns. How is it, if another town goes in quicker, do they get seniority before us? Do they get benefits before us? How is that? We have gotten complete I-don't-knows. And there hasn't been a lot of communication about this. We had that one, that one meeting for about an hour, which we were allowed to ask and speak and do whatever we like, of course, but we're talking about cutting basically 14 employees currently with about two hours of discussion. And we would just like it to not be rushed. That's basically it.
I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may, may I ask if potentially Director Moriarty might have some answers in terms of, when you brought other communities on, what was the process? of, when you brought other communities on, what was the process? How did that happen? With the employees coming in, seniority, union representation, et cetera, just to give us an idea? Thank you.
Yeah, so, to answer your question, this is kind of new. We haven't been in this position before, where we just formed a district. The current union employees don't have a contract under the district yet. That's in the process right now. So, like the union president said, there is a lot of unknowns. A lot of the things that were asked are contractual that I can't answer at the moment, which that will all be done during contract negotiations. So, to answer seniority and all those questions, yeah, those were the unknowns. In regards to employment, like when we brought on Warren, we only needed two people, one person, sorry, one person to handle the additional call volume when we regionalized Warren into our center. Ultimately, I think that left, I believe, two or three employees that were left without jobs after that consolidation. But it is, with this size of a center that we're looking at proposing, we're going to need as many bodies as possible. We are not looking to shoo anybody away. There is a formal hiring process that we want to put everybody through, just a preliminary background and a small interview moving forward. But we anticipate on hiring pretty much every single employee out of all these communities. Everybody is not coming. There's individuals that are going to be retiring, that are going to be retained by the agencies themselves to man those positions within the lobby. So, ultimately, I can't be, I'm not confident, but I don't see there being many positions being eliminated out of the five agencies, five communities currently right now. I think we're going to be looking for more bodies after we go through the pool of dispatchers that we're looking at within the five communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I also just, and just going to put this out here, request for the administration, we don't have any jurisdiction over this. It's under the police chief. But when you make that transition, if there's some of our 911 dispatchers that might want to stay on as sort of those admin roles, that they get consideration for that?
100%. And I appreciate you saying that, because I was actually just thinking that, it's like, I'd be more than thrilled to have some of our people remain with us. The problem, if it is a problem, is how are you going to structure the pay scale and how they're going to fall. And I've had preliminary discussions with the manager about how that might shake out, and obviously, you don't want to see people take cuts in pay, and that's one of the benefits to this whole process or this program. But, yeah, ultimately, I would love to see, if the pay scale was correct and could make, we could make it work, then I would love to have some of our people stay, because they're very familiar with our operation, and they already do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director.
Through the chair. I just want to thank Mr. Deray for his comments. And, you know, like I said in the very beginning, I, we really don't disagree with any of the concerns that they have from a labor perspective. They're, they're the same concerns. It is a, it is a new job, so they do have to reapply. And again, I do not want to downplay in any way, shape, or form the feelings of the members. I, I get it. I understand it. But again, I think we have to kind of just look at history in terms of what's happened around the Commonwealth with migrations, you know, to different centers, especially the Warren situation is a little unique, because it's a small community. It doesn't have a lot of call volume. You're taking on a single community. You know, it's not the best example in terms of, right, the narrative shouldn't be, well, three people lost their job and we only took one. This is a completely different scenario. When you look at the call volume of Auburn and Southbridge alone, they're going to need to more than double the staff of the center. When you look at what SEMREC's organizational and operational plan is, it is more positions than currently all of those five communities, especially knowing that Spencer and Sturbridge, there's no one, maybe one from Sturbridge, but there's no one going from those communities. So, that just actually increased the number of potential hires that they need to make. So, and again, the chief and I will be the first one to write letters of recommendation during that hiring process to make sure that our people get, like I said in the very beginning, this is not a reflection on the staff or their capabilities. And like we said to the union that night, this isn't something that we're trying to do to you. This is something that we're trying to do for you. And I wouldn't envision that any of our current employees are going to have problems during that reapplication process. You know, the one thing that I will just kind of comment on, that I don't completely agree with, with what Mr. Deray said, and although on the union side of things, it may appear that this decision is being rushed, internally, the administration and the chiefs of both departments have been exploring this for a year. Like I said, yes, is information coming out? And is it, does it appear that it has that, you know, rushed look? It does. I'm not going to say that it doesn't, but you also have to look at the five other communities who are on the same exact schedule that we are, where they're all calling for votes in a 30-day window. It's not that Auburn somehow hid this information and we're trying to rush this. A point was made, and the director has said this, is that once a community votes to join, that allows our employees to begin the application process with Central Mass. So, there is sort of a line. I think in some respects, that's why communities are trying to get this done. But, but again, to Mr. Deray's point, you know, and we agree, there are a lot of unknowns. And, but even Director Moriarty doesn't know that, because 90% of the unknowns are labor-related issues. And the reality is, is that those issues are not going to be known until communities vote to join, so SEMREC can then get a real handle on how many communities are we talking about, how many employees are we talking about, what is the total call volume. And that's all information that MassCop is going to need in order to be able to negotiate a good contract on behalf of those employees. So, I take a little bit of a different view, and I say that delaying this for some period of time actually does not put us in any better position in terms of trying to get the answers to those questions known, because Director Moriarty and State 911 are not able to put together an effective plan unless they actually know who's coming.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say I agree with everything that the chief just said. I read the report. I read another report done by the Division of Local Services for another community that was looking at regionalization. Based on everything I've heard and everything in the report, I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak? All right. Yes, sir. And then you next.
John McGlaughlin, 18 Meadowbrook Road. Just, I've gone through regionalization at a former municipality, and I believe the vetting process that the board is working on tonight is much more advanced and better than where I came from. There are issues and, you know, concerns for the employees that this will affect their career trajectory. Where I came from, the MECC that stood up for the regionalization wouldn't take any employees from the town. They had to reapply and were not guaranteed anything other than an application. And the cost to services was detrimental to the police department as it went to a dark station, as the chief said. He's, he's already addressing that, as you wish, I think is extremely important. My major concern is, if we're talking about taking care of the dispatchers, helping them progress, advance their careers, then we should give them a little bit of time to have some reassurance that they'll have an ability to apply, to go to the new regionalization. I think it's just fair. If we want to be open and trying to take care of our people, then we give them a little bit of time to maybe get a little more concrete answers. Again, nothing's perfect and nothing's, I understand union issues. I was a union president for many years. But I think it's, nothing wrong with slowing the pace a little bit to see if we can get some better answers for these guys. That's it. Thank you.
Through the chair to Mr. Moriarty. Mr. Moriarty, you don't have any plan on similar to that other racket. As I understood, what you said to our members at the department meeting was that all of our dispatchers would have the ability to apply. There's no, we're not accepting people who are currently working here, correct?
Thank you.
Through the chair. So, there are labor issues, and they won't be vetted until they're negotiating. They can't get into negotiations unless we approve this. So, those answers are never going to come, whether we delay it or not, until they're in negotiations. Is, I'm correct in that statement?
That would be my opinion.
Okay.
That's how I understood it.
And that's, I just want to make sure. So, a delay isn't going to get us any more answers.
Was there someone else who wanted to speak too? Yes, sir. Come on. Make sure to identify yourself, please.
Good evening. Thank you to the board. I'm Scott Williams. I represent the Auburn Local Fire Fighters Union. We provide, as you know, fire and EMS services to the town. We take a lot of pride in the services that we provide, not only to provide for the town and the residents, but also to ensure that we're safe and healthy when we return to work. And I actually wrote a very long speech about all the pros that I think could affect our organization and help that, which I've scrapped, because I think we're, we've flushed that out thoroughly. One aspect I think that hasn't been fully flushed out is on the operational side for the fire department. We have a lot of high acuity, low occurrence incidents that require a lot of mutual aid. And a more streamlined, unified dispatch center with similar procedures, similar technology between departments can help us get that need, the help that we need from different communities faster in an easier cooperative way that could ultimately lead to our increased health and safety. I also just want to extend, not my sympathies, but my, my well wishes with the union of the police dispatchers. I think that there's a lot of work to be done, and I have no comment on that or the timeline. And I think there's a lot to be worked out with MassCop, and I wish you the best of luck in that. Also, to our current dispatchers, I think that you all do a phenomenal job. And this move to regionalization and the union support towards regionalization has no comment on the effectiveness of the current dispatchers. I think the current dispatchers do a phenomenal job with the resources that they have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? No? Okay.
I'm chair. I'd like to make a motion to join the Central Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communications Center, SEMREC District, presently consisting of the towns of Rutland, Barry, Hubbardson, Oakham, Warren, Spencer, Charlton, and Sturbridge, for the purpose of establishing and/or utilizing a regional 911 emergency communication center pursuant to the provisions of Sections 18O to 18V, inclusive of Chapter 6A of the Massachusetts General Laws.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. All right. It's passed. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask that?
Sure. Can I make a motion that we move up item 8C?
Yes. I'll second. I was going to say 8E.
I believe 8C we have here. I know the superintendent is here for, and I think some other staff as well for
Okay.
What could be a quick vote, but.
So, that's a motion to move item 8C forward. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. So, we're going to look at the warrant and we're going to vote to transmit it to legal counsel for review. Any questions?
I just have one question relative to, trying to find it, sorry, trying to find where the warrant is in here.
Oh, I can
Other way.
Other way. I can go while you do that.
Go ahead.
So, Article 26, citizens petition.
Yep.
I believe the fall town meeting requires 100 signatures, and I just want to verify that that one did receive the appropriate amount of signatures.
I'm assuming it did, if it ended up on the warrant. The question is Article 26. Did it receive the required number of signatures to be added to the special town meeting warrant?
It did, right, Witten Bailey? Through the chair, yes, it did.
So, the, okay, I'm just, again, 100 is my understanding, not 10, because I know it's the fall one. So, so these, the citizens petitions all received 100?
That is correct. Yes. There was one, I'm not sure if it's on here. Did you remove that one? There was one that was removed that did not reach 100 signatures.
I also have a question on this article, mostly for DPW. I know, do we know what the condition of this road is right now? And if it is not up to town standards as is, what would be the, would we require the private road owners to bring it up to town standards before we accept it?
Is this Article 26?
Yeah. So, this is Witten Bailey Drive.
I believe we're going to be sending that article to the planning board for their review to determine that.
That is correct. Okay.
We can have a decision if you'd like.
Can I just, can I just confirm, though, to follow up with what Sarah had asked, that DPW is part of that process? You're doing an assessment of whether it meets our current standards, documenting what doesn't, and then giving that information? Great. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. That is great.
Okay. And did you have a question, Tom?
I did not. Steve asked my question about Article 26.
So, do I hear a motion to send the warrant articles for the October 28th special town meeting to legal counsel for review?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're all set. Can I hear a motion?
Yeah, can I make a motion to move up item 8E?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move up item 8E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. All right. So, this is the board vote in the outdoor entertainment license for Century Sportsman's Club at 531 Rochdale Street in Auburn. Is anyone, is Frank here?
Frank's in Mexico.
Oh. All right. So, just identify yourself, please.
My name's James Hackett. I am the current president of the Century Sportsman's Club.
Jimmy Hackett, you said?
James Hackett, yes.
Okay. How long has the Century Sportsman's Club been doing the haunted hay rides?
This will be 26th year.
Wow, okay.
And I believe it's the 11th year that the towns required us to get a permit.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have a quick question about the Century Sportsman Club. Are you a nonprofit or a not-for-profit organization?
Yes.
Thank you. If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the outdoor entertainment license for Century Sportsman's Club, Inc. at 531 Rochdale Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, for the 26th Annual Haunted Hay Ride and Spooky Walk, taking place every Friday and Saturday night in October, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. For you to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
Excuse me, real quick. This year, we happen to be running, because November, October 30th, 31st is on a Friday, so we are running November 1st.
Okay, so I'll amend that motion to be October and November 1st.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, can I make a motion that, given their nonprofit status, that we waive the fee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All set. Thank you for waiting, sir. All right, looking back at our agenda, now we're going to have our town planner, thank you very much, give a department snapshot on planning, please. Thanks for holding on, Adam. Please have a seat. Or there, or wherever you want.
Good evening. I'll be somewhat brief. Good evening. Your name is Dr. Adam Mann. I'm the town planner. Some of the items that I do as a town planner is, a big one is liaison with the planning board, which is a regulatory board, and they review site plans. liaison with the planning board, which is a regulatory board. They review site plans, special permits, and sometimes subdivisions. Ensure the applications are thoroughly reviewed and examined. Pursue managed grant programs. Advise the planning board and several other boards and committees. Do a lot of public engagement. And there's a lot of research, writing, and analysis that entails. This is a sampling of the boards and committees I'm involved with. Planning board, zoning bylaw review committee, they just met tonight. 40B working group, which just concluded their work a couple of weeks ago. CMMPO advisory group, WRTA advisory board, DCG, CMRPC, and other boards as needed, such as this one. One of the larger planning endeavors that was recently completed is the natural hazard mitigation plan. The town just received FEMA approval earlier this year, so we're good on that particular plan for the next five years. Other plans I've done in the recent years, it's master plan and the open space plan. A couple of the bylaw changes I've made over the past few years since I've been here. Apartment building requirements have been reduced. This is specifically surrounding the MBTA community requirements that the state passed a few years ago. Some of the dimensional regulations have changed. Big one was changing the height allowance in the commercial districts. Now you can go up to 70 feet by right or 110 feet with a special permit, which is a sizable change. The table uses and the descriptions were fully rewritten about four years ago now. Tried to make some of the uses less onerous with the permitting, requiring just a site plan instead of a special permit, and adding a lot of more of the modern types of businesses that we want to try to attract to town. Accessory drilling units, the state just changed the rules on this. We changed the bylaw at town meeting this spring to adapt to those. And a reduced frontage bylaw, this was approved by town meeting in the spring. The zoning bylaw review committee spearheaded this particular bylaw to try to allow infill of a single-family houses in different areas of town. That is still pending with the attorney general. Hopefully we'll hear back from them soon. Some of the future zoning bylaw changes, including those coming to the fall town, special town meeting, the MBTA compliance requirements. We met with the state this summer to try to figure out what we're still missing and that's gonna, that's in the war for this fall. As well as special permits, trying to reduce the burn on businesses and provide some clarity. Some of the language is outdated. Some of it didn't make sense to require a special permit, for example, for an electric vehicle charging station as an accessory use. That didn't seem to make sense in today's age, so that's being presented to town meeting also. And inclusionary zoning, the zoning bylaw review committee is looking to pursue this. So we're going to be addressing this and trying to come up with something for our spring town meeting. Other projects that are ongoing is a trail study looking at expanding, building trails in town. The DLTA project with CMRPC looking at the mall. Affordable housing. I'm sure you all know there's been a lot of 40B projects that have been completed, that are going to be coming, that will be monopolizing a fair amount of staff time. Disc golf course. Preliminary talks, the group that is interested in that. We'll see how that goes. WRTA bus stops. We're looking at adding some bus stops along Southbridge Street. WPI is actually working with WRTA and the town to look at improvements along Southbridge Street from the Worcester line to Drury Square. Tried to get some ideas for improving the traffic and adding bus stops in that area, as well as potential bus stops near Oxford Street North. And we're also looking at a tip project for Oxford Street, not Oxford, Pinehurst and Vinyl Street, that intersection there. Going around to see if we can get something in the pipeline for that area. I'm just going to go through some of the development, redevelopment that has occurred over the past four or five years. There's been a fair amount. I'm not going to read all that, but we've had some sizable projects come through. This is a picture of one of the buildings on Commerce Drive on one of the lots. It's a picture of Ross Express on a second lot at Commerce Drive, and there is a third lot. You probably drive by it all the time on Route 20. It's cleared, going towards the Worcester line. That's been permitted for a distribution facility, but it's unclear if they're going to move forward with that at this time or not. Patrick Mazda was built out a few years ago. Wagner Motors is under construction now. Hopefully they'll be opening in the near future. I think they're getting close. The storage units, Nexus Santar on Route 20, those have been under construction for a little while. Webster Five Headquarters, where Reliant used to be, that's really, really, I think looks like, looks nice now with all the plantings and the rebuilt building. And their new bank just finished over the summer. They tore down the old building and built a modern back with better traffic flow for their drive-through customers. The Chase Bank is nearing completion. I'm not sure if they're open yet, but they're pretty close if they're not. This is a driveway looking, it's Vinyl Street, it's the end of Vinyl Street. It's where a driveway is going to start, but that's looking at Julia Bancroft. And there is going to be a 40-unit complex built there. There's 21 duplexes. It's all enclosed, all are going to remain private. They're going to all take care of themselves. So it's not an extension of Vinyl Street. It's more of a, just a big driveway. I think they're hoping to have that built out in the next two years. And our 40B project that's under construction, Albert Street, there's just a few pictures. The construction you can see is their clubhouse. That's getting close to completion. I think there's eight buildings now, maybe nine that are occupied, with 12 total to be occupied. So that's going to add a lot of residents to that end of town. A couple of proposed developments currently ongoing. The cell tower in Leicester Street is currently before the planning board. 50 Washington Street, that's with conservation. They're looking to move some earth in that area, try to bring that up to grade a little bit. 192 Auburn Street, they're looking at potentially building some apartments. They're tearing down the two buildings out of there, which are in tough shape, and building apartments. Nothing formal yet that's been presented, just, you know, preliminary discussions. 5 Main Street, that's a sale. We've had inquiries, but nothing formal that's a sizable lot that goes behind Kettle Brook. It's the dead end of Main Street into the back. There used to be an old mill there. Fruit and veggies, it's a small produce shop that's before planning board. Their public hearing is tomorrow night. They're looking to take, it's like a house next to the coffee mug, familiar with that? They're looking to have a little produce shop there. And 614 Southbridge Street, that is the old Yankee drummer low site. That's been for sale. We're hoping somebody goes in there. We've had inquiries, but again, nothing, no formal applications, but we're active to try to answer questions for potential developers. And that's kind of me in a nutshell of past few years. Any questions?
Yep.
So I see a lot of development that has happened and some things that are proposed. Do we reach back out after things are approved and find out what their thoughts are on the process and how we can improve the process or be more clear in our development process for them to help the future people that want to come in? I know we have proposals or we're looking for that. I know there's been a lot of work to streamline processes and Auburn has a history of being difficult, but that has improved greatly. So I just didn't know if there was like a formal process where we are reaching out, making sure that the processes work for all parties involved and where we can make improvements, we are.
Not normally from that and normally most of the, the communication is on the front end, try to get them through the permitting process. It's not so much on the backend.
I mean, I'm sure, I just have a couple of questions since we have Dr. Menard here. I want to pick his brain on a couple of things. First, before I do that, I just want to ask, how many employees are in DDIS that are under the sort of the planning or economic development sort of banner or geared towards that kind of work that you have? I know yourself, is there other staff that support you or is it just you?
It's mostly me. We have a land use coordinator. He handles conservation in the ZBA. And he assists with the clerical work. You know, somebody can take, but planning is primarily me.
In terms of the WRTA buses, are these, are we looking, I know right now they're all flag stops. Are we looking to actually create actual stops where WRTA would, you know, will add into their regular system? There'll be regular bus stops at the location?
Potentially. I saw preliminary plan for the Oxford Street North intersection, where Bentley says of adding two stops there, one on each side, and kind of redesigning that intersection a little bit. But that's, again, it's preliminary. It could be a couple of years away if they do anything. I do go to the WRTA advisory board meetings and, you know, I do talk to the administrator from time to time about we would like some more formal stops. Auburn is the, has the second biggest ridership of the WRTA, Worcester being the first. Auburn's the second. And the WPI group that I mentioned earlier, they're looking at maybe find a place that would be a good. Sword Street at one point, used to be a regular stop. There's a lot of businesses back there, but they're much right as we go. That may be a good place for a stop. You also have the bowling alley on the opposite side, so that is a bit of a destination.
Great. I'd also like to just throw in there, Drury Square, obviously the library. I know, you know, when I go by, that's a regular flag stop. There's always people standing there.
Yep, that is one of them.
Sort of in that sort of general area as well would be, would be great. I think that would help go a long way to activating that area for economic development that we're hoping.
That is one of the areas I mentioned too. Of them, we met about a year ago with that being town on property, perhaps something that could be worked out with that, to have space for our stop.
Thank you. The last thing I have is, and this is where I wanted to pick your brain. I remember from my days on the planning board, and I'm sure Mr. Chambers does as well, there were several lots that would come into development. Some would make a proposal, some wouldn't, but they would go in and they would clear cut everything. Thinking of Oxford Street, Southbridge Street, where right now they seem to be, they clear cut. I believe something got approved when I was on the planning board. Now they're using it basically as a trash transfer site. Up on Hampton Street, other side of Hampton from where I live, but I do drive by it, there's two large lots there that were clear cut. Beautiful trees and now overgrown weeds, essentially. And what are the regulations or that we may have in our zoning, or lack thereof, maybe that we need to have in our zoning to prevent this type of clear cutting, destroying these lots, quite frankly, and then not moving forward with development and just leaving them in the, in the state that they are in?
So we do have something on the books. It's the land disturbance permit, stormwater bylaw. It's not in zoning, it's in the general bylaws. We try to prevent those glaring clearing. I know that actually the Southbridge Street one is before planning board to modify the site plan tomorrow, so hopefully that will get cleaned up. And the Hampton Street was cleared before we really had anything on the books. But we do try to catch people beforehand. We don't want to see those lots cleared. It's, they need to be stabilized. They need to be, you know, ensure the stormwater is not going to affect, you know, anybody downstream. It's, if somebody sees something happening, I encourage you to call DDIS. We can send building inspector out right away and get them to stop if they don't have the permits. But DPW is the permitting authority for land disturbance.
Thank you. That was going to be my next question, is who is the permitting authority for that? So it's DPW, not DDIS?
DPW. We try, we try to communicate closely to make sure we're all on the same page and everything, but DPW has a formal authority.
Thank you. My question was about 614 Southbridge Street, the old Yankee drummer. I know that they've, the owners didn't want to sell it to the town when we were looking for land to put a fire, a public safety facility on. Is there some way we can kind of push those owners into developing that land? Is there any, I'm not sure what their tax rate is right now. I'm assuming it would, it's less than it would be if it was developed. Maybe they don't have an incentive to, to develop it. Is there anything we can do for that plot of land?
I'm not sure. We did get them to, we, as the building commissioner, really, and fire inspector, got them to demolish the vacant building that was becoming a problem. You see, a safe is all that's left of that building and that's safe.
I saw that, yes, yeah.
They, I guess the equipment they had out there couldn't damage the safe to knock it down. Again, it's pretty, pretty well-built being a safe. But it is an issue and we, I'm open to suggestions. I don't know how you get property owner to move on something like that. Some towns I think have, you know, vacancy bylaws where if the building or maybe the land is vacant for so long that they get penalized somehow. Something to look into. But we want to see that it's been vacant for a long time, more than a decade. We would like to see something happen there eventually.
Has it been 10 years that it's been empty? Or longer?
Not more.
10 years, yeah. Thank you.
I forget when the Yankee drummer closed, but I think laws came 2014 or 15, something like that. Of course, they didn't do anything before.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. But you can probably stay right there because our next item is item 6C. We're, we're going to vote to transmit Article 26 of the October 28th, 2025 special town meeting warrant to the planning board for public hearing per Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81G. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. When would that planning board meeting be?
It'll be October 14th.
October 4th. Oh, I'm, okay.
October 14th.
14th, gotcha.
14th.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Menard.
Thank you.
Okay. Continuing on our agenda, we're looking now at select board items. We don't have any proclamations or recognitions, but we have a gift acceptance in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the gift of $330 for DPW Recreation and Culture from Central Federal One Credit Union for holiday tree lighting cookies and ask that a letter. Be prepared for your signature thanking them.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay. And under select board general items, we have item D. We're going to vote on a drain layer license for GH excavation, 72 Paxton Road, Spencer, Mass.
Make a motion to approve the drain layer license for GH excavation, 72 Paxton Road, Spencer, Mass. 01562, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And now we look down, we have no table items, no member items. Do we have anyone here for public comments? I think Mr. Elijah Ness wrote down, but he's gone, so I take it he's not going to.
I think he provided the comments and questions.
He made his comments, okay. Okay, so we have minutes from September 8th, 2025.
Can I ask that we hold these minutes until Mr. Carpenter is here?
Okay.
Thank you.
And we are meeting in one week, one week from tonight. Any questions?
Six o'clock start.
Six o'clock start because we'll have an executive session for 30 minutes. Do I hear a motion or adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.